Good evening and welcome to the November 6, 2013 Board of Education meeting. We just came out of Executive Session. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see we have a big crowd here tonight. How many Pig students?
Yeah.
All right. This was your last night to get it in, right? Well, we're glad you're here. If our meeting goes past nine o'clock, we will stop at nine o'clock and take a break so that we can sign your papers and you can come up and do the sign-out sheets. If we get out before nine, you'll be lucky and you'll be able to leave then. We'll start with introductions.
Lynn Lenhart.
Kate Navarro.
Joanne Cunningham.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Michael Cooper.
Diane Steever.
Charmaine Woodjesinger.
And Judy Kehoe.
Item number two, the approval of the minutes of the October 16, 2013 Regular Board Meeting.
Some more seconds.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number three, Student Senate Report.
This evening or this week, we've had the annual dodgeball tournament, which has been very successful. We reached our goal of 32 teams. And this Friday, we have our Halloween dance, which is $5 for seniors. And it's our first costume dance, so it's a pretty big deal for Senate. It's our main fundraiser for the year. So we're hoping to get a really big crowd for that.
Is the dance open to everybody or just?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to advertise a little bit.
And I hear you have some competition going on for that?
Competition?
Costume?
Oh, yeah. There's a costume contest, best duo, best group, and best individual. You and Candy and other prizes.
Anyone have any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Student Senate Report. Dr. Douglas is out of town at a conference. I'm not sure if.
Right. He's in Texas, actually, as we speak, at a dinner this evening. In the next couple of days, we'll be participating in a conference down in San Antonio.
Okay, great.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Right. He does have a, he has a message that he'd like to share that I didn't know where it was, actually.
Can I turn it off?
Yes, if it goes past two minutes.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out to tonight's board meeting. This is a very special Board of Education meeting because, once a year, the state recognizes a week to acknowledge the service of our many board members throughout the state. Tonight is very special here in Bethlehem as New York State School Boards Association has just elected Ms. Lynn Lenhart as their board president for the coming year. This is a tremendous accomplishment and shows a tremendous amount of dedication and service to the students of not only Bethlehem, but the school districts across New York State. And I'd like to commend Lynn Lenhart for that service and stepping up to the plate in these very difficult times. In addition, it takes a very special individual to dedicate over 25 years of service to this cause, and we want to thank you for that service and your leadership in the year to come. I know you'll do wonderful. In addition, with board recognition, I'd like to recognize our board president, as well as our board vice president, with Mr. Downey being the president and Mr. Cooper being the vice president, for your leadership during this school year, as well as among the board members. In all, our board members tirelessly give their time, from Mrs. Chaconi Steivers to Dr. Navarro, to Dr. Woodjesinger, to Mrs. Lenhart, to also our newest board member, Mrs. Cunningham. There is a tremendous amount of time that they serve as a board for the betterment of Bethlehem, as well as the students of this community. And on behalf of the administration, faculty, staff, and students, I'd like to thank you for this time. As a way of showing our support for you, we've also assembled a couple donations tonight for each of our libraries, from each of the board members, and I want to thank you for your selections, as I know you'll announce them soon. But I know also, our art supervisor, Mrs. Melanie Painter, has put together a program for presentations tonight of students' artwork to show their love and encouragement for all that you do for an education here in Bethlehem. So I hope you will receive these with the great passion that the students have put into their work, as well as the passion you put into education here for Bethlehem. And I know I couldn't be there, but I did want to make a brief statement of thanks for all that you do, and keep it short so that the meetings can still run on a very shortened time schedule. I'm sure all the students in the audience for Pig will appreciate it. So, from my vantage point, I wish I could be there, but most of all, I want to extend my thanks for all the great work that you do. Have a great evening and really have some fun. Thank you.
So will each of the board members share their books?
Okay, my books this year are going to the high schools, so all of you here tonight will have a chance maybe to look at them before you graduate this year. The first book is a book, "The Muses Go to School." Okay, this is inspiring stories about the importance of arts in education, and I guess we're going to have another demonstration of that in a little while. What is the role of technology in education? I think most of you know what that is, but this could be an interesting reading, too. I found that this was interesting, that you would have this in libraries. It's on school funding. And actually, I'm curious to read this myself. Maybe they have solutions to our funding problems that we haven't thought of yet. And then lastly, Electronic Devices in School, which sounds like another interesting book that you guys might enjoy reading. So anyhow, as I said, these are going to the high school, and I really appreciate doing this. Kate?
My books are going to Slingerlands, and I think someone had a sense of humor, because my top book is Bones. And then I have icebergs, coral reefs, hurricanes, trains, sea creatures, and my kids will think it's funny, Guide to Insects and Spiders, because I can't stand them. So I think this is a good mix for me.
My books are going to Hammagrail Elementary, so I will make sure to tell my littlest daughter, Riley, who is here, who attends third grade at Hammagrail, to have her check out these books at the library. We have a book on oceans. We have a technology book called "The Bite-Sized World," pun intended. We have Hazardous Tales, A Civil War Tale. We have Tap the Magic Tree, and a book by the bestselling author of an adult self-help book called Who Moved My Cheese? That is called Value Tales. So lots of good stuff. I think this is a fabulous idea, so I appreciate that we're doing this tonight and showcasing this, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
My books are going to Glennon Elementary. I have one Becoming Ben Franklin, one about Martin Luther King, Martin and Mahalia, On a Beam of Light, Wolves of the Beyond, and Gone Fishing. So I hope the kids at Glennon enjoy these.
I'm honored because it looks like I have the tallest stack here. And I love this event because I love being able to share books with students. So my books are going to Eagle Elementary this year, and we have The Year of the Baby, Stink and the Freaky Frog Freak Out, The Spotted Dog Last Seen, Charlie Bumpers Versus the Teacher of the Year, The Year of Billy Miller, The Life of Ty, and The Waffler. So I hope the students at Eagle will enjoy them.
And my books are going to Elsmere, and we have Martin and Mahalia, Empire State Building, Human Body Factory. Here you go, Kate, Slither and Crawl, and Shimmer and Splash.
My books are history, art, and science, a book about 13 artists, a book called Imprisoned: The Material of Japanese-Americans During World War II, which is about the internment camps in the United States. Several on science, Breakfast on Mars, The Periodic Table, Ten Plants That Shocked the World, and Mr. Lomencillo's Library. They are going to the middle school, and I hope my daughter in the back there, who's rolling her eyes, will take some of them out and bring them home and tell us what she's learned.
And I would ask Ms. Painter if you could come up and present the artwork?
Thanks very much. I'd like to thank Dr. Douglas for inviting me here this evening. And on behalf of the faculty, students, and community, I'd like to thank you for your dedication and commitment to the Bethlehem Central School District. As one of our student artists quoted in our artwork, "The trees of tomorrow are the seeds of today." Thank you for helping plant the seeds in every child's future here at BC. I've invited student artists here this evening to present each board member with a framed work of art. I'd like to call each student forward to present their artwork to the Board of Education member, and they'll also receive a certificate of recognition and a copy of their artwork. First, I'd like to call Henry Billick. Henry represents the high school. And Henry will be presenting his to Mrs. Lynn Lenhart. And they all represent trees, so you'll have different types of trees from all over. Next, I'd like to call Julia Madalena. She represents our middle school, and her art teacher is Mr. Peter Reggiero. Julia will be presenting hers to Mrs. Charmaine Woodjesinger. Next, I'd like to call Erin Felberbaum. Erin represents Eagle Elementary School. His art teacher is Ms. Kathy Buckley. Erin will be presenting his artwork to Mr. Michael Cooper. Next, I'd like to call Eliana Cromling. Eliana will be presenting her artwork to Mrs. Diane G. Consever, and her artwork is Next, I'd like to call Sarah Hardel. Sarah is from Glennon Elementary School. Her art teacher is Ms. Kathy Buckley. And Sarah will be presenting her artwork to Mr. Matthew Downey. Next, I'd like to call Rose Castagna. Rose represents Hammagrail Elementary School, and her art teacher is Ms. Tracy Fortin. Rose will be presenting her artwork to Ms. Joanne Cunningham. Next, I'd like to call Anna Pellis. Anna is representing Slingerlands Elementary School. Her teacher is Ms. Colleen Seem, who is joining me here this evening, and her artwork is going to Ms. Ketryn Navarro. And next, I'd like to call Sabrina Balzen. Sabrina is representing the Bethlehem Central School District, and her art teacher is Ms. Diane Siegel. And we're going to present this to Ms. Jody Monroe this evening in recognition of Dr. Douglas, who could not be here this evening. Thank you, everyone. And every one of the students, they felt such pride in signing their artwork. I went around to each student and met them in their classroom, and we signed their artwork during the last few weeks, so it's been very nice to see all their creativity rewarded. So thank you all for supporting the creativity and innovation in our schools, so please enjoy the artwork and display it proudly in recognition of your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, too, Melanie, because you had some students' art on display at the School Boards Convention in Rochester.
Yeah.
And they were great. The whole idea with the trees.
We've done a lot of trees this year. That was our main thing. It was a whole art show that we did.
That was great. Thank you for being part of this.
Melanie and students, thank you very much, and the parents for supporting your students in all their efforts. And when we have special guest students here, we like to present them with our eagle pen. So if each of you students could come up, we have an eagle pen for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Painter. And again, on behalf of the administration and the faculty and staff, I'd like to also just thank the board. You guys do a lot of work, and you know, I'm sure most people don't know how much time you put in, but it's very much appreciated. And thank you, Mrs. Painter, and all the students. This was wonderful. So thanks for joining us this evening.
And I just asked Mrs. Painter, because I said I feel guilty taking this from the parents. And she said they made foam ones, so the parents actually have it. I feel better.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Matt, do you want to maybe, I think there are family members that are here?
Oh, yes, yeah.
All our family members stand up?
We'll give that opportunity. So as it was announced, it is Board of Education Week, and many of us are very fortunate to have some of our family members here. So if we go in order, Lynn?
Well, I thought they all could stand up.
No, we want to single them out. George?
Okay, my husband George is way in the back. I guess he was late coming in.
Kate, I'm not sure.
My family's at Chinese buffet.
Oh, nice.
My family is here. I think all four of my kids. Ella Meredith, back there. She is a junior here at the high school. Hayes Meredith. Come on, guys, give a wave. Hayes is a freshman here at the high school. Grace Meredith, who is at the middle school in seventh grade. And my youngest child, Riley Meredith, who is in third grade at Hammagrail. And I'm very happy that my husband, who happens to be the newly-elected Bethlehem Highway Superintendent, is also here waving from the back, Brent Meredith. And it's, I just want to say, it's very nice to see so many students here. I recognize a lot of you. I see lots of the hockey crowd and some of my old friends from my neighborhood, so great to have you here tonight. Thanks for coming.
My wife, Laura, is here. I'm sure she made quite an entrance because she's sporting a very sporty boot on her foot because of a stress fracture. So give her wide berth when she leaves.
My family's not here tonight. Couple adopted girls in the audience.
I don't know if my family's still here. Maybe my daughter left because she was so ticked off about the rolling the eyes comment. Or she had to go to basketball practice. But my husband, Christian Leesow, and my son, Andreas Woodjesinger-Leesow, and daughter, Rebecca Woodjesinger-Leesow, were here, but I think they had to go and get someone to practice.
And I'd like to acknowledge my wife, Debbie, that's here, and my daughter, Laura. Laura? She waited till the last meeting to come to it, to do her Pig, right? All right. Next is the Board of Education Report. I'd like to start out, reiterate what Tom had said in his speech, and congratulate Lynn. It's quite an honor that we have Lynn as the statewide president-elect of the NISBA Board of Directors. We're very fortunate, and she's a very strong advocate for you students. She's here, you know, all the time, advocating for programs and for funding for the school, not just here in Bethlehem, but throughout the state. And then two other things. I'm not sure if it's the appropriate time for me to mention these, but the board, because of Lynn getting elected to the presidency, she also serves as Area Seven Director, which now will create a vacancy in that position. The board has received two different requests for nominations for board members from other districts to serve as Area Seven. One of them is Matt Wade from the Brittonkill Central School District, and the other gentleman from Shenandoah.
Gary Delalo.
Gary Delalo. So I know I had forwarded on the information to the board members to review if we want to maybe have a discussion on that or.
Well, I think they have to have official nominations done first before they, and then there'll be a ballot to come out, so maybe that's a better time, depending if they get the district to nominate.
Well, they had requested nominations from us.
From us.
They had requested, both of them had saw our nomination so that they could run, and then subsequently, we would have to vote on them. I know I'd asked Lynn, and technically, we could nominate both of them to the seat, and then ultimately, we'd have to vote for one of them, but I didn't know if anyone had any thoughts on that at this point. We would have to do the nomination by the next board meeting.
So we'll get a copy of their bios and information to.
Yeah. I forwarded that on to everybody.
I thought there was one, was a letter. I'm not sure if, I think one provided more extensive information than the other. I'm not sure. Maybe I didn't open all the attachments.
Yeah, you must not open the attachment. Both of them had an extensive bio from both of them and what their experience was.
I would suggest we wait until the next meeting.
Okay, we'll put it on as an agenda item for the next board meeting to make a determination. Okay. That's all I have. Other board members?
Several of us were able to attend the Middle School Character Award Breakfast this morning, which is always a very nice event. It honors students who do something that displays their good character, and they're nominated by their team during each quarter to attend this breakfast and get a certificate. It was a large group of students this morning, and it's a wonderful event because most of these kids don't even realize the nice things they did were being recognized until they get invited to this event. And it's just a great way to honor students for doing the right thing.
I agree, and I just wanted to, too, I was talking to some students at the tables, and I said, you know, you struggle to get, you know, good grades, you struggle to be good at sports and to be good at all different things, but I said, what's most important in your future is how you deal with other people, and whether you're generous and you're helpful or considerate and willing to help other people when they need it. That's what, you know, that's what ultimately really counts.
One thing I'd like to add, too, was several of us were at the NISBA Conference last week that I mentioned, where Lynn was elected, president-elect. There were several good sessions, and one of them, Dr. Woodjesinger did a session, and I found it very informative, even though I work with her, you know, at every board meeting. I think she brought up some very good points and presented that statewide. So congratulations, and job well done.
Yeah, I attended it also. I thought it was very good, too. You did a great job.
No, I just wanted to, two things. One is, I'm going to be attending the November 15. It's a NISBA training that is for, I think, new board members. There's a fiscal piece and then board governance. It's like a day and a half, so I'm looking forward to that. I think there's a lot of good information they put together in those programs. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, because I think that this meeting took place in between the board meetings, was I did attend the, I forget the date of it was, maybe the 20, actually, the end of October, the Common Core Forum that was held in the city of Albany, was held at one of the middle schools. And it was a forum where there was, I think, seven or eight elected officials, as well as Commissioner King and one of the Regents. I reported to the board, but I just wanted to say a couple of things publicly about it. I would say the first thing was, I was very, very impressed by the level of articulate comments that were presented by a very comprehensive, robust group that included administrators from all over the capital region, including in the city of Albany, as well as surrounding districts, as well as teachers, parents, special ed advocates. There were even students who came and spoke. Just, and there were many voices, including folks from Bethlehem, that spoke. But I have to say, it was, I went there to listen and hear the concerns. I think there were some very universal themes that came out that I think we heard, and Jody heard probably at our Common Core Forum that you hosted at the middle school, that focused on really the pace and the specific nature of some of the directives related to Common Core, and really the inflexibility, the appropriateness, especially for special ed students, as well as the younger grades. People came with lots of data, lots of sources of information. Nobody sort of got up and just spoke without having some information that they used in their presentation. And I also think that, in my view, it was a real missed opportunity, I think, for Commissioner King to articulate a little bit of, more of an openness to parents who, you know, in the hundreds are coming out to talk about Common Core. And I think there was also, in my view, it was disappointing that there wasn't a message back to the parents and the teachers and the administrators and the students that we can do better and we can figure out some modifications or some ways to ease the transition that instead it was very much, you know, the districts are doing this, and, you know, they need to probably do a better job at how they are rolling out Common Core. But from the highest levels of state ed, certainly, there wasn't a message that was meant to be, "I hear you. Let's figure this out together. Let's, as a community, address what is clearly burning issues in the minds of parents and students and teachers." So I think it was a missed opportunity. But I also just want to publicly state that I applaud all of those individuals who came out in the hundreds. There were long lines of people who had two minutes to speak, and it's a real lesson that we have people out in our communities, parents, teachers, administrators. Some of the teachers gave very emotional statements about the struggles they're facing, and we should be proud that we work in communities where people care enough to come out and talk about some of the challenges we're facing in our curriculum and our efforts to raise the bar. But it was, it was a really great experience.
Yeah, I think, I think some of us would have been there.
Yeah. Yeah, it was the same night, I think.
But I think also, I think it's important for the Regents to hear the message, too. I think the Commissioner is listening, despite what it appears sometimes, but they're the ones who have said that we really have to push this through and now, and this, and again, this is a group of individuals, except for maybe Regent Jackson, who represents our area, and Regent Dawson, who's a college professor but has visited every district in his northern area, from Schenectady up to, you know, to Clinton County. He has visited every one of his school districts. I'm not sure that the rest of the members of the board of Regents have really spent much time inside a public school or have, or any classroom. And they're the ones who are really pushing, you know, doing the pushing. So I was glad, I assume it was Regent Jackson was there?
Yes, yes.
And he had been a principal of the North Commie School District. So he's at least familiar with what administrators and teachers are going through.
Thank you.
I'd just briefly say that the conference was great. I know we came back with quite a bit of material to share. I attended sessions on school safety, expl-
a bit of material to share. I attended sessions on school safety, exploring school safety, where our, the architect who we just hired, Ashton McGraw, Dan Huecraft, presented with Director of Police from Rochester. It was fabulous. I know Diane was there, and it really got me thinking about the nature of police response and what architects can do to assist schools in building safer schools. And I'm so glad that we hired Ashton McGraw. He did a great job. I also went to sessions on long-range fiscal planning and the fiscal awareness strategies that was done by the Assistant Comptroller, Carrie. Very informative a PAC session. I appreciate so much that the school board members from this district came to my session on the role of school boards in fostering inclusive educational environments. And there was a keynote presented by a man named Bill Daggett. He presented on a national study about skills preparedness, basically, and what we're teaching and the gap there. And he has provided us with the PowerPoint slides, and he said we can, I'll forward those on to other board members. But it was fabulous and very data-based, but fascinating in terms of what students are learning and how they're being prepared for the workforce and how they are not being prepared. So it was, it was fabulous. A very good conference. I know you probably had some hand in preparing and selecting speakers and all, so I just commend the NISBA board for a great conference that they put on.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have a presentation, a special education LAP school designation. Kathy Johnston and Laura Heffernan will be representing that.
Good evening. As you know, I'm Laura Heffernan, the principal at Glenmont School.
And I'm Kathy Johnston. I'm the Director of Special Education here at Bethlehem.
And we're here tonight to talk about how Glenmont School has been identified as a local assistance school by the State Education Department. This was based on an achievement gap that was, became, that was noted in our test results from the 2011 and 12 school year between our regular education students and our special education students. So what is a LAP school? Schools identified as LAP schools must have a plan that is focused on closing identified gaps in student achievement, in our case, between our regular education and our special education students. And we use a self-review process that state ed defines as an opportunity to identify and implement actions that can be taken to improve the academic results of the identified subgroups, specifically special education. The State Education Department has a number of different criteria for identifying a school as a LAP school. It could be that the school is not making adequate yearly progress, AYP, which is not the case at Glenmont. We have always made AYP. You could have a subgroup that's performing at or below a certain level, say your English language learners, for example. Again, that is not the case at Glenmont School. However, we have been identified as a LAP school based on the performance of our special education students in relation to how our regular education students have performed. Specifically, this slide demonstrates the describe, the achievement gap that existed on these 2011 and 12 state tests. Glenmont School math tests, the gap is not as, as wide. So we are showing here the ELA test, the English Language Arts test. And as you can see, that year, 90% of our regular education students scored a three or a four, which is considered effective, proficient. Well, our special education students only scored about 15% of those students as proficient. Now, state ed somehow computes some points values for this, and our point value is 101. And 100 is the criteria, the threshold that we should have been below in order to have not been a LAP school. However, we made it by one point. There are a few things to consider about this LAP school designation. As you saw in that other slide, we had 90% of our regular education students performing proficient, a three or a four on those state tests that year. We outperformed every other elementary school here at Bethlehem, our regular education students did. So in a way, we're being penalized because so many of our students did so well, which unfortunately exacerbates the gap between the regular education and the special education students. It's also important to note that Glenmont hosts the intermediate skills class, which is a class of fourth and fifth grade students with significant special needs from across the district. They're not just from Glenmont School. And they do, they are required to take the New York State tests, and those tests do count towards our scores. We do have a higher percentage of special ed students at Glenmont, which Kathy will also address. We were a little surprised at when we were notified of our LAP school status by the State Education Department. As I continue to say, this is based on the 11-12 school year test results, which we received in late summer, early fall of 2012. However, the State Education Department did not inform us of our, of our status until the summer of 2013. As a principle, this is frustrating because the fourth and fifth graders who took those tests, it was the third, fourth, and fifth grade scores that counted toward this designation. The fourth and fifth graders are now in the middle school this year, so we can't do anything to help those students at Glenmont School. So only those third graders who took those tests are still at Glenmont. We have always made adequate yearly progress at Glenmont School and been a school in good standing. And the State Education Department, just last year and this year, has focused more on growth scores. In other words, how students do compared to how they did the year before compared to cohorts who are similar. And in fact, we've done very, very well at that. We had 16 out of 20 for our score in the 11-12 school year. And last year, we actually scored a 17, and we were among the highest of the Bethlehem Elementary Schools, again. So yes, we do have this discrepancy, but we also have a lot of strengths at Glenmont School.
What did you hit there? Okay. Okay. So what I have, what we have before you is a look at the identification rate of special education students across the district. Each of the bars represents a different school. So at Eagle Elementary School, for example, 12% of our population is identified with, as special education students. Elsmere is at 14%. Glenmont is at 20%. So it's higher than any other school. Hagergrail, 16%. Slingerlands, 13%. The middle school at 15%, and then the high school at 10%. We wanted to break this down to kind of give you a better sense of what this looks like. It's important to note that when we are using these percentages, we're talking about students that are identified and have an IEP, students that have a 504 plan, or students that are on a D-class with support plan. So it's, it's quite a few students. The top of the list identifies how many students per building. The middle column is the number of students in total in that building, and then that's how we got the percentages. So for example, at Glenmont, there are 300, at the time that we pulled this data, which was at the end of August, there were 332 students, 66 identified as having either an IEP, 504 plan, or a D-class with support plan. And that's how we came out with the 20%. The bottom, you can see the entire district. So again, late August, our enrollment was at 4,696 students, with 611 of them identified, which gave us a 13% rate. And when we use, which is a number that state ed often uses, just the students with an IEP, we were at 11%. So going back to this, this LAP plan, what are the requirements of a LAP? Well, a district in good standing, which Bethlehem is, a district in good standing, has to do this 25-page self-review. As soon as Laura, Jody, and I found out about this in the summer, that process began immediately. It has to be presented to the Board of Education, that's what we're doing right now, and then it will go on our website once it's been approved, and that needs to happen by November 22nd. And then the most important thing that comes out of this is the work that we are doing to decrease this achievement gap. So going through what those things are, and again, I have to say that this began right in August, when we found out about this, and with the staff at Glenmont School, some of them who are here tonight, we've begun this process. So we began really looking and examining at the teaching practices, both in our regular education classes and our special education classes. One of the things that we looked at very carefully is when students leave regular education to get maybe the special education service that they need, and looking more at pushing into the classroom and doing a combination of services. We're monitoring our special education identification rates, so really looking at reducing that 20%. One of the other things that we've looked very carefully at in the last few months is our declassification rate. It's a smaller rate at Glenmont than it's been at other schools. So really trying to figure out, when is the right time for a student who's needed some services to be fading out of those services? We're holding monthly monitor, school data teams, looking at, very carefully at the data, how our students are doing, where the gaps are, and how we can help them in both regular ed and special education. We're focusing professional development on areas that we think our teams will need to help our students. And one of the other things, Laura referenced the fact that we have intermediate and skills class at Glenmont, but we also have, you know, a number of other special education programs. So we have our assistive technology specialist, who spends an hour every Friday morning, really helping the teams work with assistive technologies that will ultimately help our students.
So you're doing this with all the special ed students, not just the fifth graders that are left from that original group?
No, we're looking at, I think we've looked at every piece of data with every student that's at Glenmont. It's also helped us, we're obviously not just looking at Glenmont, we're having a very careful view, but we're looking with teams at all of our schools.
And the middle school, too, because again, those students moved on.
Yep, we did a comparison of where they were and where they are now.
Okay, so the middle school teachers are also working, the special ed teachers?
The teams at the middle school, yeah.
Can you just go back to the slide where it was broken down by school and percentages? Because I want to make sure, just mathematically wise, I'm not sure I was hearing perhaps correctly what you were saying. It was, I don't know if the slides had numbers on them.
Maybe just back there. With the number of students and the percentages.
That's one, yeah, that one. Right. So the percentages, if you read across, adds to 100%. So that's 100% of this actual special ed kids, not the percentage of the student population per school. Correct. See, where it says 12, 14, that, that row all adds up to 100.
Forty-nine students out of 425 is 12% of the population is identified as special ed students.
At the school.
Of that school?
Of that school.
Is it? Because I, I, I added the percentages across as to 100. So I thought to myself, that, I don't know if that's, because you divide the lower number by the higher number and multiply by 100. So because if you add that percentage column across, that adds to 100. So...
That's just a coincidence.
That's, yeah, that's...
That's just, yeah. So you're saying...
So if you, if you look at Glenmont, so we have 66 special ed students, there are 332 total students in the building. So out of those 332 students, 20% of them have special ed.
Have 504 plan or declassification plan.
Okay. So just by, by coincidence, it adds to 100. So 20%, you're saying, 20% of the Glenmont population is special ed students?
Yes.
Okay.
Kathy, did you say that 11% are ones without the 504s?
Correct.
That all, Kathy?
So just, district-wide students with just IEPs is 11%.
It's 11.
And as we've talked about at other board meetings, the 504 plans, you know, if I pulled that separately, much higher at middle school and high school. There's less than two or three per elementary building.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I know I spent, I think, maybe two years ago, I spent some time in your school, and I know it's a special community. I'm, I'm confident that the special community in Glenmont will assist every student to achieve his or her potential while in elementary school.
Thank you.
And I look forward to hearing more about the progress.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.[1472.76][1472.76](applause) At this time, the board offers an opportunity for recognition of visitors who have something to say about the agenda, any particular agenda item. It is the policy of the Board of Education to allow public comment during the visitors' period of the meeting. It is not the policy to engage in public debate. Your comments and statements are heard, and we greatly appreciate them. Excuse me. If there's any information we can provide to you after the meeting, feel free to contact the superintendent's office with your request, and we'll do our best to get information for your needs as soon as possible. Does anyone have anything to say about an agenda item? If you could just state your name and everything, because we're being filmed. Thanks.
Hi, Cindy Ferrari, Bethlehem Healthy Kids. I believe on tonight's agenda, there's going to be a first reading of the wellness policy. Is that still true?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to express that, well, I don't know if this is possible, but if that could be postponed, or if there would be an opportunity for people who are involved and interested in the content of that policy to be able to see it. I don't exactly know the procedures. I know there's a first reading and there's a second reading, and since we haven't read it yet, I don't have specific comments. I've seen the one that, you know, was revised, that's on the website. And, you know, I, we've been through the WELLSAT process, which is an assessment tool that measures the strength and comprehensiveness of a wellness policy. And that's a great tool to see how we score. And I don't believe the current policy scores very well. And I know we strive to have a better score, which is why Bethlehem Healthy Kids and the Coordinated School Health Team likes to have a role in reviewing this document before it becomes policy. So that is one request. Obviously, I know we have to follow procedures, and if it's on the agenda, if it has to be read tonight, then I'm happy to listen to it and kind of digest it as we go. But I would like that opportunity to have seen it. There's other tools that I could mention, but I think it's a little bit premature. So I guess I just want to have that on the record. Thank you for listening and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Jody, is the policy, when, when we put the agenda up, is the policy there?
A draft policy.
Oh, no. Okay, okay.
Will, will it go up tonight after the first reading, though?
I don't know that it has in the past. It's up to you if you want to have it up there.
Probably should go up.
Yeah, we should put it up to make it available for the public for comment or, you know, for review.
Good evening. Tonight, my name is Pete DeVries, and I'm with the Bethlehem Booster Club for cross-country track and field. We have on the agenda tonight a donation of $7,500 for assistant coaches for the indoor track program. If you remember, several years ago, the indoor track was almost cut from, from the program entirely. The, the middle school program, the modified part, was eliminated, and one coach was eliminated at each level for boys and girls at the high school level. The program is still exceptionally popular. There's around 200 kids running indoor track. The two coaches that were left at each for the boys and girls are really not enough, in, in the Booster Club's opinion, and we have, that's why we're providing this money tonight to pay for assistance. I show you on the graph what the ratio of students to coaches are without the contribution. The two coaches would be 60 participants per coach, and with the contribution, it's down around 40, 40 per coach. So hopefully you might consider in the future reinstating at least one coach. The Booster Club, $7,500 represents virtually the entire year's worth of fundraising, of Applebee's breakfast, car washes, and we even organized a race that ran from the high school here. And that is what I want to leave it at. We're mostly con... We're mostly concerned about the supervision aspect of a 60-to-1 ratio with sports that have some danger involved in throwing shot puts, jumping over high jumps, curls, pole vaults, and that sort of thing. Secondly, I just wanted to update you that on the cross-country front, we had 35 seniors graduate from the program this, this fall, and we still have two. Those seniors were part of a New York State Public High School Scholar-Athlete Team for all three years that they were, for the past three years. Both boys and girls were New York State Scholar-Athlete Teams. That's an over 90 average. Secondly, we still have a couple runners running. Steve Booker and Alex Carlson qualified as being two of the top, the fastest five boys in Section 2, and they will be running up at Queensbury on Saturday at 9:50 a.m. in the state meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marietta Angelotti. I'm a parent and a family doctor in the area. I also wanted to support what Cindy Ferrari said, that it's very important to we parents that we be given the opportunity to review the new wellness policy and be able to express our opinions on it. I also was wondering whether I would be allowed to read as a statement the opinion piece that was in the spotlight today about the coffee bar that's now in the high school. Would I be allowed to read that in? The name of the piece is Bethlehem's Coffee Bar: A Disservice to Everyone. When our children are in our schools, a fundamental role of our schools is to look out for the welfare of our children. This means keeping our children safe while giving our children the tools they will need to help them through life. The school must set good examples and help our children develop good habits. At first glance, a cafe in the Bethlehem High School and junk food in our school cafeteria seems like no big deal, but take a minute to analyze it, you will realize how contradictory it is to the purpose of our educational system. Good habits are vital to our children's education: math, writing, reading, exercise, work, and living habits, which was something that I think was brought up today about teaching our children good character traits, and also about preparing them for the workforce. We need to prepare them to be adults and to have the life skills to be healthy as well. The list goes on. English teachers don't say "write legibly" or "allegably," it's your choice. We don't allow bullying while teaching acceptance. We don't allow cheating while teaching honesty. So why are we teaching the immeasurable importance of a healthy lifestyle while providing an unhealthy one? Do we say "don't smoke" and hand out cigarettes because it's their choice? Our teachers spend an enormous amount of time and resources, our tax dollars, teaching our children the importance of health and nutrition, yet we send them off to the cafeterias and offer them the exact things they are told to avoid. Sugar, caffeine, and saturated fats trigger the same drug addiction responses, this is a dopamine response in the brain, as cocaine and heroin. That is a fact. They actually alter brain chemistry. Our children become subject to side effects, including mood swings and depression due to chemical dependency. Isn't child behavior turbulent enough already? They also lead to a lifetime of health and medical issues plaguing our country, higher health insurance rates, higher short and long-term medical costs, lower standard of living, et cetera. I think we're all aware of the skyrocketing rates of diabetes in this country because of the skyrocketing rates of pediatric obesity. The school's claim is that they are offering healthy choices, which should outrage parents, because if you really analyze it, there aren't actually choices. It's not a choice when you're craving an addictive substance. Two students told us they drank two large coffees a day from the cafe, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Their parents didn't know they drank coffee. I often bring this up at work and other places in public. Did you know that the kids can buy coffee at school? And they're outraged, they had no idea. Very, very, very few parents realize that the children are buying, can buy coffee at school, and as much of it as they want, and their parents didn't know they drank coffee, so they had to sneak out on weekends to get coffee, otherwise they felt sick from caffeine withdrawal. That's, it's a medical fact. You know, as a physician, I can tell you that we've had patients who have to take caffeine tablets before they go into surgery if they're very addicted to caffeine. Otherwise, they can have projectile vomiting. So this is, this sounds crazy to the kids, I see, but it's really actually not. Your child choosing between cookies or chips versus an apple is not making a free choice because they are unaware of the addictive nature of these items. They're being sold unhealthy items that then cause them to crave more of those very items that their school is supposed to watch over their welfare is inviting them to consume. From every scientific and educational perspective, this is a terrible idea. Refined sugars and saturated fats in these foods are exactly what lead to innumerable medical conditions. Depressingly, the Bethlehem Central High School made $55,000 selling addictive products to our kids last year, such as coffee and junk food. This is money we gave the school to sell these products to our kids, creating lifelong addicting habits they'd never be able to break. Put all the spin on it if you, you want, but what we are doing is selling addictive products to our own children. Our school have plenty of opportunity for these product, project, products everywhere they turn in life. This should not include school. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really would prefer to talk from the back of the room, but here I am up front. So I'm also here from, I'm a parent, I'm a social worker, and I'm a member of the Bethlehem Healthy Kids Committee, and because we had heard that the reading was going to happen tonight, we wanted to, and strongly encouraged, parents to come and express their thoughts about this. As you know, we were present in June when the changes were decided upon by the board to leave the federal meal program at the high school and to not adopt any other evidence-based nutrition standards. We continue to have big concerns about that. The wellness policy that was read to the Coordinated School Health Team in, I believe it was the end of April or first of May, was one that was being reviewed to be presented to the board for revisions and adapting. I believe that we're supposed to do that annually, or we try to do that annually. And so we make recommendations, members of the Coordinated School Health Team, which the Bethlehem Healthy Kids Committee has a couple of representatives that sit on that team. And so there was a good discussion about that at that time, and review of the policy, and so, and at that time, what was, I think, discussed and recommended by the Coordinated School Health Team was like one or two minor modifications that actually improved the policy. One of the items in the policy that will clearly need to be extracted from it and will reduce the quality of this policy is number 10, which is ensuring that snack food items sold individually contain no more than the federal guidelines for fat, sugar, and sodium. Of great concern is the coffee bar. That was a concern of ours back in June. It's a concern to parents that are writing to the paper. It continues to be a concern of mine. I, my understanding from students who frequent the coffee bar is that essentially it's 100 percent non-nutritious items, AKA junk food. That includes coffee, frappuccino, cocoa, nachos, brownies, cookies, muffins, I'm sure not portioned, portioned to what right size is. And the only item that is of any nutritional value at the coffee bar is a breakfast sandwich that's only sold for like about an hour in the morning, and the rest of it is sold all day. The other thing that I learned about the coffee bar, excuse me, I have to slow down, take a little breath here. The other thing that I learned about the coffee bar is because it has been so financially successful to the district that there's talk about expanding it to other areas of the, the high school. Now, so the, the, the body that's discussing this is the Coordinated School Health Team, who focuses on student health and wellness. Clearly, there are scads of research exists today that anybody could easily access about the problems with not having evidence-based nutrition standards for kids in general, but in particular in a public school system. Kids, you know, they have, parents can, you know, encourage them to make choices. I'm not going to, you know, police my child and tell her what she can and can't buy at school, which is, you know, what we heard in the June meeting from some members of the board, that it's, parents are abdicating responsibility. We're not abdicating responsibility. We want the school district to step up to the plate and put some thought, some real serious thought into the nutrition end of this, and not just the money end of it. It's really, can have an extremely negative, negative impact on the kids. It is across the country. We have a quarter of kids in this school district that are either overweight or obese, and that is partly created by the places that they frequent, and one of which is school. So do we want to be a part of that, or do we want to be a part of the solution? I get $55,000 is a lot of money, but we make those decisions, you have a limited budget, you make decisions about where to spend the money and where to not spend the money. There's got to be a different solution to this. I've also heard some of you say, and I'll quote from the June videos that I reviewed after the meeting, because I wanted to see what everybody said, that one remark was by a member of the board is, "Maybe we shouldn't be selling sugary muffins in the cafe." Another remark by a member of the board is, "Well, we'd really like to see that the majority of offerings be healthy and that we live up to health class and that we not contradict what's being taught." That's what was said in June. Today, we have a cafe that we want to expand because it makes money, and 100 percent of the items are non-nutritious, and they're sold from first thing in the morning till end of the day, and now we're moving to after-school. So I'd like you to really consider that, and I would like for the Coordinated School Health Team to have an opportunity to review whatever these revisions to the wellness policy are. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Anyone else from the public? Thank you. Next on the agenda, item number eight, finance. It is, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, A through D.
Some move, second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item.
Thank you, thank you to the.
Yes, yes, thank you again to the, to the boosters for donating generously, so generously.
Actually, Matt, can I go back, because I do have something to mention. I didn't realize the track donation was in here. Whether it's athletics or music, I don't care what it is, every year this comes up, I've asked the same question, is if it's legal to accept donations to put towards personnel? And I'm not sure if I've ever gotten a very, a clear decisive answer from our attorney. For example, let's say we cut teachers, I'm going to say at Elsmere, and the PTA came up with $60,000, let's just say, to hire a teacher at Elsmere. Would we accept $60,000 and hire a teacher?
I think that would be a call that, that particular board would have to make. I, I believe we accept the donations with the understanding that it is the right of the school to do with it as it needs, and we'll use it for the intended purpose, hopefully, but if something came up and we weren't able to use it for the intended purpose, that...
And the team can't pay?
No, I understand, I understand. My, my base question is, can we accept donations from anywhere and hire personnel? That, and that's come...
See, I don't know if that's ever been the way I've understood the question, but we can definitely get the...
That is the question, is can we legally accept donations from the public and hire?
Designated for.
We did check that, and as long as we're accepting it as a donation, we can decide how to use that, and if that's to hire personnel, then we can do that. There's no, there's, the issue becomes when there, another organization is paying someone in person.
But Elsmere couldn't say that it would be up to the board and the administration to decide how that money would be used.
I'd like just, if Norma could provide us with a written, I remember she was here once, and I, I thought she was kind of toeing the line.
Well, there's, there's definitely some problems with that, because it's hard to, you know, sustain it, is the problem.
Well, it's not even sustaining, I just want to know if it's legal, and so if, if we could get a written opinion from our attorney, that would be great. That's all I'm asking. I want to make sure we're on the right side of the law.
At next week's policy meeting, one of the new policies we'll be looking at is about booster boards, and part of it covers the issue of donations. So we can discuss that at the policy committee meeting as well.
Sure, right. I just want to make sure I get it from the, the person who's supposed to be advising us on our legal issues. Thank you.
Definitely, we'll get that. Item number nine, professional personnel.
Do we vote?
Lynn, were you saying something?
I didn't know if we voted.
Yeah, we, we voted.
Yeah, yeah, I had to go backtrack, because I didn't realize the booster donation was coming.
Number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff actions, action items, A through H.
Some move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Jody, I had a question about item C. One of our high school guidance counselors is going out on maternity leave, and obviously with college selections and getting ready for college, that's a significant gap, so can you just let us know how you're planning to bridge that gap and make sure that there's a continuum of services for those students?
Yeah, well, we'll definitely hire someone to replace that, and would have that person work with, with Kate prior to her leaving, so there's some consistency. Generally what we do.
I can say, under B, it looks like Pamela Stewart worked for the district for 26 years in special ed. Well, wish her well, and thank her for her over a quarter of a century of service.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number 10, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, A through G.
Some move.
That's a first.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number 11, correspondence for action. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action items, A through B, and B being the first reading of the wellness policy.
Some move.
That's a first.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Actually, not so much with the content of the policy, but the, the title of it. Can you bring that up? Because, because I just thought that maybe, you know, the policy committee could remove, remove the first, or the second sentence of it. Can, can you bring up the policy?
The what?
Can you bring up the policy, 5405, up on the screen? I just want to...
We don't have access to the computers over there.
It's not up here.
I can't get it.
Oh, you can't get it?
It's not linked. Is that what you mean?
You have the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. It's not linked. Okay. Could, I don't have it in front of me either. The, the sentence reads, oh, good. I just think all of our policies basically are either, you know, federal laws, state laws, or, or local choice laws, that, you know, that we establish our whole policy manual from, and this one, for some reason, states in the second sentence, "Section to Afford the Child Nutrition Women, et cetera, Reauthorization Act of 2004 requires all school districts to establish a local wellness policy." I think since we have the policy, we don't need to state that, because either it'd be presumed it would be law, or that we're choosing to do it, so I don't think that sentence needs to be in the policy. Okay, so can I just recommend that?
Mike, will you take, if you're on the policy committee?
Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss that next week at the policy committee.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm on the policy committee, and I did raise some issues with the first reading of, of the wellness policy, and I listened intently to the comments tonight. I would say that I agree with much of what was stated. I hear about this issue a lot, and I hear about the cafe and the selling of coffee a lot from parents since joining the board only a few short months ago. I raised this issue myself, because, I mean, I, as a parent of four kids, two in the high school, I, I really don't support and don't think that it's an appropriate place for a public school system to be selling caffeinated beverages to students as, you know, with the cachet of it being, you know, through the cafe. I understand the fiscal issues, but I also quite honestly reject the notion that we have to sell junk in order to make money. There's plenty, plenty of business models out there where, in fact, The Perfect Blend sells smoothies that are quite healthy... sells smoothies that are quite healthy for a lot of money, and I guarantee every kid in this room has probably had many of them shelling out their own personal babysitting money for the smoothies. There are healthy choices out there. If you go to Trader Joe's, everything in the store, or quite a bit of the snack foods are, in fact, pretty reasonably priced, healthy snacks. A lot of us work really hard to make those available. I do agree with the notion that we can do better, and that we should be setting the bar really high. We have obesity issues in this country. We have kids that are getting addicted to caffeine at a really early age. I've heard a lot of the arguments being made and heard the pushback, "Well, you know, we've got to teach them choices." Well, fine, we do, we all do that in our homes, but the question is, what should the policy of a public school district be? Should it be to sort of dangle it in the school district, in the cafeteria, and say, "Well, I hope you're making a good choice, Johnny. You know what we do at home. I mean, we know these are kids, we know how they behave." I do think we could do a better job. I think, I like the idea of establishing an evidence-based practice. I don't see anything wrong with that. There's a lot of data out there today about how you can create parameters around a wellness and a healthy foods policy that we could learn from. I'm sure that there's many school districts out there that have done a lot of research. I'll look into that before our policy committee. I think that we can do better. This is an issue that, I will tell you, has been brought to me by many, many parents of young children, not even high school children, but kids in middle and elementary school. And I think that it's a burning issue that we should pay attention to. I think the policy could use some work. It's got some of the elements that I think are essential for a school wellness policy, but I do think it omits the idea that, you know, if we had a sugar-free Red Bull, according to this policy, we could sell it right at the cafe. You know, are we okay with doing that? I don't think so. I look forward to a really good discussion. I think there's a lot of people who care about this. I hope that we can, you know, roll up our sleeves and come up with something that's really good, that would be supported and endorsed by a lot of the folks that know about this issue, that care about it. A lot of us have backgrounds in, you know, lots of different areas, whether it's public policy, or healthcare policy, or pediatrics, that we could, you know, lend our skills and talents and knowledge base to. But I think this is a really important topic, that we have an opportunity to do a really good job on this, and I look forward to the work group and us putting some stronger teeth and creating a policy that sharpens our focus and does the right thing by way of our parents and students.
I do want to just clarify, Paul? Paul? Do we, we sell, I thought we sold smoothies at our cafe, too? Yeah, so it's just not, coffee isn't the only thing sold, but, only because you brought in about-
No, no, I understand, but I know-
So, I mean, there are, I mean, the comment was made that it's 100% junk food, and you were trying to say that smoothies are healthy. I think we do sell some, what some people consider healthy, some other people may not, but-
Right, depends on how you make them.
I just want to clarify, so I think for the public, we should clarify, our first reading is, it's just been introduced, and it sounds like it's going to go up on the website, that the next meeting, we can decide if it's going to be a second read, and once after the second read, it becomes policy. If we want to delay that, I guess we could do that at our next meeting. To some extent, they're related, but they're not the same, as far as I understand. So, the policy, for example, in order to affect the coffee shop, let's say, for example, the wellness policy would have to say, for example, "No caffeinated beverages." Because the policy is just, is broad, and then whatever the district implements has to be in line with the policy. It's not, you know, this is a subsection of the policy that deals with the coffee shop. It's a broad document that then anything the district does has to be in compliance with the policy.
Right.
And I think the board already voted, we'd have to revisit the vote, to approve the food service department from leaving from the federal guidelines, because that vote was already taken. So, if we strengthen the policy and basically make it to say that anything the district does at the high school level has to be in line with the federal standards, we have to revisit a vote that we've already taken.
I don't think that's what, at least I'm suggesting, yeah. I'm not, yeah, I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that you create a policy that's meaningful, that's proactive, that includes, you know, strong appropriate elements that focus on wellness and school health and nutrition, and then, as you said, you live under that. I'm not suggesting that we revisit the, you know, federal school lunch program. I mean, I do think that there's lots of data out there that show, you know, what good evidence-based practice is for establishing, you know, nutrition guidelines in your snack programs and, you know, different programs. It doesn't have to be, the federal school lunch program is one, there are probably many, many other, you know, sets of parameters.
A lot of states in the country, from researching this, don't allow caffeinated beverages. New York is one that does. Many don't, so it's not like we'd be on the forefront of doing that. I mean, we're almost behind. I tried to read about this all day, and all different sites, and I can't come up with any positive reason to have it, the cafe. I really, if I was trying to argue both sides, I honestly can't argue the other side.
Well, the policy committee certainly will discuss this next week, but I did want to make a couple points. First of all, we did set up a mechanism so that parents can block their students from purchasing any items that they don't want them to purchase in the cafeteria. But the second point I wanted to make is that this is really between the parent and the student to decide. I think there are many parents in this district who are opposed to their children drinking caffeinated beverages, but I think there are many who, when they get to a certain age, if they choose to do so, they're okay with it, and I'm somewhat loath to dictate to parents how they raise their children.
I guess I'm, I'm not suggesting that. I'm saying, we're a public school system, so we get to decide what the policy is. We should decide what the right policy is. Whether or not you choose to, you know, have your kids, I mean, I've heard of horror stories of what parents let their kids, you know, smoke pot in their living room. I mean, you know, parents make bad choices all the time. I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying that we set the policy that is the appropriate right policy for a public school system. Parents still make the choices they want. I know lots of parents where coffee is okay in their house. That's their choice. The question is, do we, as a district, support selling it and making available to children and young adults? You know, I mean, I think Kate's point is a good one. It's not like we're on the cutting edge of districts that haven't already said, "You know what? We're not okay with this." You know, this, there's a lot of data that says that this isn't good for kids. In fact, there's not much data on the, there's no data on the other side. You know, you go to your own doctor, and as an adult, they ask you, "How much caffeine do you have a day?" You know, if it's more than a cup, your doctor's probably going to give you a little cautionary note that says, you know, "You might want to watch it." I mean, the data supports that, you know, it, in excess, is a problem. And, you know, the question is whether we, as a district, are okay with having a policy that allows it, selling it, in the district.
Exactly. You can't legally restrict what a kid brings in, so you're not, you're not saying you're parenting them. You're strictly saying what's sold by the district.
And I think that we would probably want to get a sense from the board overall, in terms of, you know, Joey, and I hear you saying not to sell caffeine. I mean, there's a lot of products besides coffee that contain caffeine, chocolate bars, you know, soda in the vending machines, soda that the booster clubs sell to raise money so that they can hire, you know, or provide donations to us. So, we got to be careful of any policy we set, and the implications of those policies, and how they could impact the various entities that, you know, try to raise money for us, or, again, I know, it shouldn't be about the money, the $50,000, but the reality is, it is about the money. Because if we don't have the $50,000, and it has to be a self-sustaining program, what it means is the other prices have to go up. So, we can't say, you can't look at the money, because you have to look at the money. It's part of the equation, whether we like it or not, it is part of the equation, the money. If we, if it's not self-sustaining, then we would have to do away with the program entirely, is my understanding. I mean, we can't fund it through general, through the regular property taxes. It's supposed to be a self-sustaining program, so, you know, they've made great strides and efforts trying to bring that, to offer products that the students are willing to buy to help make the money to fund the nonprofitable, so.
Right, right. I guess one of the good data points might be to see how much of that, you know, dollar figure is derived from coffee sales versus other things. I mean, I would like to see that. I mean, are we talking about a big, you know, source of revenue? Or are we talking about 20% of it? You know, what, you know, what is the, you know, the profit areas of, you know, the cafe and, you know, and that? I mean, some of the, going to your point about, you know, caffeine, you know, completely caffeine-free, and I realize that's a problem. On the other hand, you know, we already have some language in there about, you know, 35, no more than 35% of total calories from fat and sugar and trans fat. So, I mean, there's ways to orchestrate this, so that, you know, you're not having, you know, eliminating everything across the board, because it's got, you know, some scant amount of caffeine, because it has chocolate chips in it, or I don't know what, you know, some cocoa powder or something. I think there's ways to be reasonable, but still setting the bar at an appropriate place, where, you know, we're not selling a caramel frappuccino that tastes delicious, probably has lots of sugar in it, and also has, you know, probably two cups of caffeine beyond, you know, what even an adult would have, you know? And there's a lot of caffeine in those beverages.
Would you like some perspective on those numbers? Our total food sales for the calendar year, or for the fiscal year for the school approximates $1 million. So, the $55,000 that's coming from that coffee shop is really a very small percentage of the total. The iced coffee sales have been very popular with the students. Those total revenues last year were about $10,000 for the year. Of that $1 million in total revenues, the bulk of that is coming from the lunch programs that we're offering. And I know we're working to arrange some tours for the board. We're working with the students through the marketing class to talk and make them aware of the types of nutritional offerings that we have. We have revamped the serving lines for that lunch program this year. We have a fabulous salad bar that's available every single day. It has, add your own toppings. There's chickpeas, onions, peppers, all sorts of different toppings that you can put on those salads. The entrees, today they had chicken breast and chicken cacciatore that I had for lunch. It was delicious. They have those types of entrees available every single day. On the other line, they have pasta and pizza that's available as an alternative, so that way the students do have those choices. The lines are open all day long, where they used to shut them down between classes to refresh the food lines. They keep a continuous flow of food. We have a higher percentage of students this year, it's close to 54%, who do not have a lunch period. So, what we're trying to do is make foods available for these kids to just come in, quickly grab something, hopefully a healthy choice to eat. Again, we are making that available to them. The teachers allow them to eat in their classrooms other than labs, and we're trying to spread the word that it is a new cafeteria set of offerings, and that we do have many good choices available. So, you know, despite declining enrollment totals or numbers at the school, our meal counts are actually starting to trend up, so the word is getting out there about these different opportunities. We're spreading the word with both our students and with our employees. So, again, we're listening to, I hear, the concerns that you're voicing about the offerings within that coffee shop. It is a small fraction of the overall total. We're really focusing our efforts on offering a quality, healthy, variety-filled lunch options for the kids.
That sounds great.
I just have a question, Jody. When you did, like, with a fraction of the cost in the students with caffeine, did you add employees to that, like adult staff?
Yeah, the adult sales lag behind our student sales with the numbers that I've looked at, but we do have reports that I can share with you as to what is selling and what is less popular.
And we are scheduled for a food service presentation in December, I believe, so.
Yes, December 18th, we'll do another update on where we are trending.
Would it be difficult to still allow the caffeine beverages for, you know, staff?
Oh, no. I mean, we could still make it available for staff, only you basically have to show your badge in order to get caffeinated beverages. It's evident who's a student and who's a staff member.
Yeah, why would we want, we're not, I mean, the food service is for the children, it's not for the adults. I mean, if they're able to participate in it, but, yeah.
Well, I was thinking of the financial end, they'd be helping the finance.
But we don't let staff smoke on grounds, and the students not either, so.
Well, that's federal law.
It's a little thing called the federal law.
All right. So, do I, I don't get a sense of the board in terms of, I think the biggest issue is in terms of, how do we, what direction do we want to give to the policy committee in terms of restrictive guidelines? Are people in favor of restricting caffeine?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
We have three yeses over there.
Well, I brought this up a while ago to Tom, and no one said anything, so it's, I don't know if people have-
I don't think I was on the board, then.
No, and the other thing is, I've been on the policy, this is my fourth year on the policy committee, and I know Mike and I have been on it for several years. This policy doesn't have to be revised every year, by the way. It, I don't know, it keeps coming up on the agenda. I know one year, we worked heavily with the Healthy Kids Committee, they wanted organic meats, only organic, et cetera, and we got to the point where we had to say, at the vote of the board, "We hear the public, the board makes the policy." So, I think we should hear the public look at alternative models. Eventually, the board will have to decide. I think at the first read, I would suggest that the board give any direction you want, and the policy committee's going to meet next week, and Tom will be there, I assume, and I know he has some feelings about this. I also believe it might be, is Scott Landry here?
Yeah.
No, because I've had some discussion with him. It'd be helpful to have him at the next meeting also, because when we do a second reading, we can always table it. It doesn't become policy until it gets accepted for a second reading. So, I would suggest let the policy committee hear some feedback, do its work next week, and decide if it's ready for a second reading or not, or if we need to open it up for additional, either public comment, or the high school staff to weigh in, et cetera.
So, what exactly does the first reading mean? Does it mean we approve it as is?
No, 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 no.
It's in the pipeline, it's in the pipeline.
An opportunity, like Lynn gave, some material changes for us to provide feedback.
Right, right, right.
Now, it'll go back to the policy committee that needs to address some issues that we brought up.
And I would just caution, I mean, if you do put that in, to make sure, because you're absolutely right, like with concession stands and the booster clubs and all that, that, you know, they sell soda at night, at the football games, at the basketball games, wherever.
Yeah, but the school district isn't selling technically.
I know, just be careful of the-
But does the policy impact what is sold on the grounds?
Right, well, that's what you have to decide.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can, you can, you can write a policy that is meaningful, and like I said, proactive, and sets the bar high, that also doesn't tie your hands at the football game from, you know, selling a soda. I mean, the intent is not to, you know, create this environment where we have, you know, the sugar police, you know, at the concession stand at the football game, which is, while it's a school event, it's not during the school hours where kids are here because they have to be here all day, and they are a captive audience unless they bring something from home. I mean, I think that's a little bit different of an- that's a little bit different of an environment. And like I said, you can write this however way you want, keeping in mind what you don't want to do at a concession stand, but yet what you want to exist in your four walls of your cafeteria, you know? I mean, I think that sounds like a reasonable place to go, you know?
For me personally, I just would like to think more on it, just because for me, I don't have that with parents telling me we shouldn't be doing it. They're like, given the choice, they're going to be going to college, rather have them have it here than taking their car down to Stewart's or McCarroll's or wherever else to go get their coffee. So I would just need to talk to more people personally.
And then the issue, maybe it is money, because the question is, if you say, "Well, we shouldn't sell it," because I had this discussion with Scott Landry, and he said, "Well, is it, we don't sell it to make money, or we don't allow it?" Because if you don't allow it, period, in the school, that means, he said, "We're in the business of checking cups." And that, they don't want to go there. So the question is, do we allow it in the high school, period, or do we sell it? So it does get to be not even splitting hairs, it's, should the district offer it for sale versus should it be here, period?
You can't restrict it if they bring in. You're not legally allowed to, but you can legally restrict what you sell.
Sure you can. You can restrict no smoking. Yeah, sure, you can just say you can't bring it in.
Absolutely not, not unless it's a federal guideline. Right, you can't. You cannot restrict what the kids bring in unless there's a legal reason otherwise. You know, if it's alcohol, obviously.
Anyway, okay.
Personally, I've not had people, you know, come to me about the cafe. I've heard positive things from a lot of the students in terms of, they like the cafe. And I know that they, if they don't buy it here, they'll go to Stewart's. We have an open campus policy. They'll leave, they'll go. So, and again, if we're not restricting that, they can take, can't bring it in, I'm not so much in favor of restricting the sale of it myself.
Yeah, although I would argue, just because Stewart's sells it, doesn't mean that we have to- we're not competing with Stewart's. We're trying to set a policy that is the right policy for a public school district, you know?
Matt, can you ask Scott, out of curiosity, we have a lot of CUs who have, how many, you know, purchase-
Yeah. I don't know if anyone heard, Ms. Lynn Hart, how many of you purchased from the cafe? How many of you purchased caffeinated products?
How many would go to Stewart's if they couldn't-
Yeah. If we didn't have it, would you leave school to go buy a product? Thank you. And again, it is, I think, as Charmaine said, it's, the board will set the policy. I mean, we will take comments from the public and various inputs, but it is the prerogative of the board to set the policy.
Absolutely.
Judy, can you make sure that the revised policy is put up tomorrow?
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number 12, at this time, we would recognize any visitors who have something to say about a non-agenda item? Okay. All right. Being non, future meetings.
Someone coming, I think.
I have something to bring up. I don't know if this microphone works. Yep, all right, there we go.
And your name, please?
My name's Rick. I'm a senior at the high school. I had a few questions regarding the football program. Next year, they're tearing up the football field to redo it. I was wondering where we'd be practicing, where the, next year's varsity will be playing their games.
Unfortunately, I don't have those answers for you, but there is a whole process where they'll get the information out to the community and to the sports programs. I don't believe we've even gotten the, there's a whole process that has to go through yet that-
Will it be brought up at other meetings? Is there going to be another meeting I can come to, to hear about it? Is there going to be other ones?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we have periodic updates from our architects, and they've submitted the plans to SED. They have not gotten approval of those plans. After that, there is a process where then we go to public bid for the various projects, and then there'll be timelines established of what facilities will be inaccessible and what would be, and what the alternatives will be.
All right, thank you. And is this the appropriate time to bring up, I have a comment to make about the coffee discussion we've been having?
Sure, yeah.
All right. You guys are talking about cutting teachers, but if the coffee program makes $50,000 a year and we can keep one teacher, wouldn't it be worth it, keeping one job?
Actually, the coffee program, it doesn't make $50,000. It helps to sustain the food program. It's $50,000. It doesn't, we don't make money on it. We actually had a deficit last year on the food program.
I mean, that wasn't brought up, so I wouldn't, I didn't know that.
Yeah, no. $50,000 of sales for the coffee shop, but overall, we have a deficit still.
All right, thank you.
It's in a separate-
We wish it made $50,000.
Matt, just one comment, because it was a hot ticket item the other night at the football game. A lot of people are talking about that. I would suggest that there's suggestions that the students have to kind of, you know, put them in. We're going to be hiring the new athletic director soon. You know, that is a concern of a lot of people, where they're going to play.
Oh, okay.
Or maybe if Dr. Douglas or Mr. Nolte could even comment about potential solutions at the next meeting, just since the question was asked, if people could let them know that was asked and if it doesn't even-
And even if it happened, I mean, things go so slow. I mean, are we-
Right, it may not happen for a couple of years.
Right.
Your students will definitely be gone, and a few more, maybe. Okay. Future meetings, Wednesday, November 20th, 7:00 PM here. Wednesday, December 7th, here, and then Wednesday, December 18th. I'm sorry, Wednesday, December 4th. I don't, the policy committee meeting is when?
Tuesday at 7:00, 5:30. Tuesday at 5:30.
And tonight, we establish an audit committee meeting for December 3rd, or not?
You did.
Yep, okay.
I may not be able to-
At 5:30, so.
And I will, I'd assume that the evaluation subcommittee meeting will be rescheduled once the calendars get coordinated. Thank you.
Brittany was going to get that out. There is no need to go back into executive session, so. Well, we got to wait till nine, because the kids haven't had their full experience here. They're all antsy. Just, students, don't forget, come up and sign out. We've got several sheets, so they can go quickly tonight. Motion to adjourn, first and second. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries.